I call to order the Town of Old Saybrook zoning commission regular and hybrid meeting of Monday, July 18th, 2022 at 7:00 PM in Town Hall, First Floor Conference Room at 302 Main Street, Old Saybrook. Seated tonight, that's me, Bob Friedman, Chairman, and regular commission members, Jerry Lewis, Secretary, and Anne Marie Thorson. I can't see if she's there, but...
If I'm here.
Anne Marie is there, and that's three of us. And Mark Delmonico is four. Seated for Mark Calderella, who is not present this evening, will be John Henry. And also present is Justin Terebili. And anyone, anyone else on the commission?
Sandy.
Pardon?
Sandy DeSenza.
Is here.
Yeah. We did. All right. Then we have our zoning enforcement officer, Chris Costa, and our clerk, Joanne Gally. And I see one, two, three, three attendees online. And what do we got, like 10, 10 or more in the room?
Yeah, almost 20.
20 or so.
About 20.
Okay.
Do you hear us?
All right. Then next up on the agenda is regular business, the minutes of our previous meeting, July 6th, 2022. Are there any additions or corrections to the July 6th minutes?
They have a good, I make a motion, accept them.
Okay, I'll second it.
All right. Motion made and seconded to approve the minutes as presented. Any discussion on the motion? All those in favor of approval of the minutes of the July 6th, 2022 zoning commission meeting signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries 5-0-0. Next on the agenda is continued public hearings. Petition to amend the Old Saybrook zoning regulations for animal care services as a special exception use in the I industrial zone. And Section 9, new definition of animal care services. A new Section 41.2.9, animal care services as special exception use. And in Section 53, special standards. Applicant Janet and Michael Stoner, Agent Attorney Terry Lum. So where, where are we at this point? We had Anne Marie Thorson, according to the minutes, asked for a sound study. And I see in the paperwork and the online available, that, that is available. And Anne Marie, do you have any comments?
I'm not so sure whether it satisfies me. It means it, like, one study that was done in, like, Michigan. So I'm not sure that makes me feel comfortable about it.
All right.
I noticed, you know, I went online, and I saw that the other Camp Bow Wow in Connecticut are, they're like in much more kind of commercial areas, not so much close to a residential. So I'm concerned about the noise.
Okay. The text change includes, does anyone else have any comments or questions on the proposed text change?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Just some housekeeping. I'm going to go through the referrals.
Okay.
Responses. So we received a response from Harbor Management Planning Commission, Marcy Ballen in Deep, and seven letters for the file. And just another thing, and just an announcement, I don't know if anyone's here for hand for comments tonight, but that's going to be continued. So just, I want to make sure that no one's sitting there for that.
Right. The, let, all seven of those letters are posted to the website?
Except for the one that was just handed to us this evening from Albert and Sandra at 81 Colter.
And, all right. So I've, I read all of those that were posted online, but I have not physically seen the one received this evening. So any commissioners have any questions or comments regarding the proposed text change? None appearing. I have, I have a couple.
Wait a minute.
Just one comment that I agree with Anne, that from the standpoint, when they made this comparison, it doesn't tell you how many dogs were at that camp. So that is one dog, 10 dogs, so it's 125 dogs that is proposed for here. So it's really, to me, was not a legitimate comparison from that. And I did some Googling for noise at kennels, and I tried to gather as much information as I could. And they say that the average range from noise from kennels could rank anywhere from 95 to 115 dB. But the effect of diminished sound over distance, and this is a very good explanation. It's, it's, for every doubling of distance in meters, sound is reduced by six decibels in ambient conditions. So in other words, if you had the average of 105 decibels in the middle of the pen, you went one meter away, you reduce it by six decibels to 99. Double the distance, two meters to 93, four meters to 87, eight meters to 81, 16 meters to 75, and 69 meters at 32 meters, or 105 feet. So you're still borderline with noise at that distance, close to the upper limit of what's accepted for the industrial zone.
Right. Well, I have, I have some, thanks, Mark. Does the applicant have any response to Mr. Delmonico's comment?
Yes. My name is Michael Stoner. My wife, Janet, and I, we are the applicants.
Can you just come up closer to the mic so that people aren't hearing?
I've been in the door at least so far, and I've never seen such a crowded house. The first thing I'd like to point out is Camp Bow Wow is a camp. It's not a kennel. It's not a kennel. One of the reasons why there are 200 of these, and they've been so successful is because they do not operate by caging dogs. And what happens when you cage dogs and you put them into runs, and they're not able to get to the other dogs? It creates anxiety. The anxiety creates fear, and, and dogs get, they want to be let out, and they're not allowed to go out on their own. That's totally opposite to what Camp Bow Wow is. Camp Bow Wow has indoor runs, it has outdoor runs. The dogs can go to the bathroom at their leisure. They tend to follow around their counselors. Most dogs stay inside. Like, now, the sound study that we shared with you, 10 dogs that were asked to go outside and bark, and it was measured from 100 feet. It was the closest apples to apples that we could get you. There were four other studies that were for 500 feet. That, that just was not an apples-to-apples comparison. And we're still searching for more studies, and we can also do our own study at South Windsor, or at Stanford, which are up and running. The other camps are not running Connecticut at this point. I think the comment that Michigan versus Connecticut, it's, it's Camp Bow Wow. These are all run the same way in about 30 different states across 200 camps. The other thing I would mention, everything is designed for the dog. It's not designed for the, for the owner. It's to keep the dog happy, active, and stress-free. So they have, they have play yards inside and outside, they have things to play with, and they play with their friends, and they make friends. And they make very close bonds with people like their manager, Meredith Landau, who if you could just wave her hand, she worked where we were, we were customers for 11 years in Boulder. She became very, very close with our dog. And I think she can tell you that most dogs stay inside. They want to stay cool during the summer, they want to stay warm during the winter. And, and, and so the average number is about 15% of dogs that go outside. And we would manage that and mitigate with fencing. And I, that's all been pretty clearly laid out in terms of what we, we want to be good neighbors. We're not looking to make enemies. We're looking to run a really good business that's a little bit like Starbucks in this category. They're doing it differently. It's not a kennel. And I have to, I have to reiterate that to everybody, because there is nothing like this within 25 miles. And the 125 miles in Guilford to, to, to the east is not as good. It's not, there's one of them, there are not 200 of them. And the one that we go to in Groton is nothing like what we're talking about. So I wanted to get those points across. Janet, did you want to add anything?
Not at the moment. I'm sure I'll have to.
Anything else from the commission as regard to questions here? I have, I have a couple. One, one goes back to our previous two preliminary discussions regarding the proposed use of Camp Bow Wow situation. And I recall asking specifically for the maximum number of dogs on site at any given time. And the applicant has not yet provided one number to establish the maximum number of dogs in total on site. We have two different numbers here, split out for indoors, I'm sorry, for board, for boarding, and for daycare. But it's, you lift, you lifted up to me, the commission, to add those two numbers together. So I'm going to ask the applicant, what is the maximum number of animals, dogs in this case, that will be on site at any given time?
So that number, I believe, is in the text change amendment, proposed text change amendment, which is 75 for overnight boarding, and 125. And that's, that was the last point that I really should have said. No, it's 125 during the day. It is 75 overnight. We're never going to have that many dogs.
Right. So the max.
That's a max.
The max. One, give me one number. One number for the maximum number of dogs on site under all possible means for them to be on site.
125.
125, okay.
During the day.
And, and during the evening, then, it would be less than 125?
75.
75, right, okay. Max, and that 75 is overnight. All right. Then I would, I would alert you to the fact that if this text change application is approved to enable the possibility for a Camp Bow Wow application in this I zone, that it might thereafter be subject to limits under the max as proposed, just so you're aware. Furthermore, in terms of the wording proposed for the I zone 41.2.9, there are six uses of the word "shall." We don't use "shall" anymore in our regulations. We would require that that word be changed to "will" in each case. So the, just checking with the applicant, that it's okay with you if the zoning commission makes a change in the proposed text so that every use of the word "shall" would, would be changed to the word "will"?
It's not a problem.
Okay. Then, in the definitions of animal care services, it clearly says the keeping of dogs and cats for grooming, trading, training, boarding, daycare, and veterinary services. This I-1 zone proposed text change, it, it, it says animals, but I always hear for Camp Bow Wow that you're talking about dogs. And so just to be clear here, that your text change proposal for the industrial zone allows for the possibility of cats being included because they are in the definition of animal care services.
And it, it does include cats and animals, and that's because as we got into the regulations, what was uncovered is that every animal business in Old Saybrook, the way that the current regulation is written is out of compliance. It has to do with the five acre zoning on the residential lot that goes back to Bochum Road, apparently 20 to 23 years ago. I don't know the details of that, but this text change amendment wasn't just written for Bow Wow. It was written for the Town of Old Saybrook so that you could actually entertain a business and a model like Camp Bow Wow. We're only dealing with dogs, but we were asked, I think, Attorney Lum, in, in partnership with, with Chris Costa, to try to fix this problem at the same time of all of the animal care, all of the animal businesses that have over five animals. And so that's why the extra definition, the definition also includes cats and animals. We're just dealing with dogs.
Right. So again, if this text change amendments are, are approved by the commission, then that becomes the regulation. And for a specific site plan special exception application for a Camp Bow Wow, it could at that time be limited to only dogs. Okay. That, that's how it works. The regulations allow for dogs and cats, but a specific application could be, a condition of approval could be that it be only dogs.
And if we make it to the application process, the formal application process, that will give us time to compile more sound studies, both interior and exterior, as well as everything else that you guys are looking for. We have not moved to that application process, a formal process, which includes lighting, HVAC, how do we handle waste, how do we handle water, how do we handle parking, what's the landscaping going to look like, what's the exterior fencing? This letter that we submitted does get into quite a bit of details about noise mitigation and what we're planning to do to be good neighbors and to mitigate that noise. And what can we do with dog behaviors? But we haven't made it to the application process because there's no point in applying if you guys don't change your regulation that's, that's frankly outmoded, and it's, it's outdated.
You're right.
And it, and it's not serving other animal businesses in Old Saybrook either.
Right. And I read elsewhere in the materials provided to the commission that you had described that there'd be one counselor for 15, each 15 dogs. And that's not to be in the regulations, that would be on a specific site plan special exception application, correct?
That's correct. And the state of Connecticut requires one counselor per 15. We call them campers because it's a camp.
Right. Okay. I have no further questions. This is a public hearing, so if there is anyone present in the room or online, online there is a raise your hand feature at the bottom center of your screen. And if you're in the room, raise your hand if you wish to say anything, either in favor of or in opposition to this application for the text change only.
Simon, did you want to speak?
Yes. Someone, someone in the room, please help me out in calling on those who are raising hands.
Simon, would you like to speak?
Yeah, this is, this is Simon. Are you talking to me? I'm online.
Yes, yes.
I just, I mean, this is the first we heard about this, so I just wondered if, if the applicant does apply, what the next steps are, and what, what residents within the vicinity can and cannot do to either approve or object. What, I guess I might ask more of the processes.
Is that a question for the applicant or for the?
Pardon me? That's, that, help me out here. Could some, someone, someone on, on the commission or Christine Costa, please, could you address that matter?
At this point, the application is a proposed text amendment to allow for the use. The next step would be if the text is approved, the applicant would make an application for a special exemption permit, and they would provide noise, traffic, lighting, site plan, all the information that's been brought up through the letters. The commission would conduct that review. There would be another public hearing where everyone can come out again and discuss and voice their opinions. And if that application was approved, you do have the right to appeal that special permit to Superior Court. Is that answered a question?
No, excuse me. That, that got kind of answers it, but do we, do we get advised of, do local residents within, let's say, within earshot of the, of the proposed facility get, get a letter about this specifically so everyone knows?
So we don't do adjacent property owner notifications, but you can subscribe to get email delivery of our agendas on our website. And it will be published in the Hartford Current and on our website.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. Anyone else present in the room or online wishing to speak in favor of or in opposition to this application for the text change?
We're going to...
I've been a resident of Old Saybrook for approximately 48 years, so I'm approaching being a local member here. My wife and I have raised four boys, and our sons have raised two grandkids, my grandkids. I've been involved a fair amount in the Old Saybrook sports. And I see at long last, we have lights up on the turf field, which, thank you, it's been a long time coming. I am currently a member and president of the North Cove Crossing on Colter Street. I'm representing myself. Others will have things to say. Others have written in various comments. There are some 108 units, 108, 108 homes that are affected on the three condo associations that are very close to this prescribed dog center. Our center, our condos associations are all for 55 and older, and I think I meet that That means there are possibility of at least 200 voters in, involved in this. I would say that our value of our homes is considerably very high. We're glad to pay the taxes on, on these. But we don't have the ability right now to pay a big amount for one part of the overall budget of the town in, we don't have kids that live with us anymore, thank goodness. And with that, we, we feel that we think that what has been described before would definitely affect the value of our homes. You can do all the attestation that you want, but still, there are, the barking dog will affect us. It will bring down the value of our homes. And I think we should remember this, that you're going to bring down the value of our homes, and it's, we don't feel it's right. With that, I am clearly objecting to the change in the regulations. And somewhat, I think we will remember what happens as an outcome from this meeting the next time there's an election around. And I will just leave it at that. And I'll let some of the other people in various condo associations grab the floor.
I got it.
Oh, yeah. It's a, it's a technique.
This is the chairman's, we can't see that far in the audience. Just call people up.
Hi, I'm Erica DeSenza. I'm here with my husband Frank. We live at 81 Colter Street, North Cove Crossing, Unit 11. And our house backs up to the conservation area, which backs up to the industrial park. Besides the noise, which we have all gone over, key issue why my husband and I are both against it, but a couple other reasons, the traffic. That traffic light that is on 154 River Street and Stage Road, at best, is horrible right now. If you're coming into town over on 154, heading into Old Saybrook, and you need to make a left, there's no arrow, and you hold up traffic. When you do make a turn there, because the oncoming cars don't stop, it has proven, it, it's a mess. That, that whole area is a mess. It has, that light has broken down in the past, and over the weekends, it can't be fixed because it is a state light, and we end up having a lot more issues there. So we just think, traffic-wise, if, if he is saying 125 doggies are coming to Camp Bow Wow per day, it's like dropping your child off at daycare. That's a lot of traffic that is going to come over and get into that little industrial park and then try to get out. Either way, it's tying up that, that location. So we have a huge issue with the traffic, with the noise. It does, but the conservation area, which inside the conservation area is a tidal wetlands, and you're talking about Founder's Park. When the trees are in bloom, we still hear the noise sometimes from the Ford dealer. We can hear them announce that a car is ready. We can hear beard lumber. We can hear the Amtrak, and if, depending on how the wind blows, we can hear the train number of what's going on. So when you looked, and this I thought was kind of cool, when we looked at an aerial map and it chose it, it was like, wow, it looks far away. It isn't. Behind, in North Cove Crossing, behind the western side, there is a path that was the train tracks. It leads right to that industrial park, i.e., right to number 50, right down there. So my husband and I are definitely against it. We just don't think it's the right place for a dog camp.
If I can add one thing that she mentioned about the noise. I'm Frank DeSenza, her husband. We're also concerned about the, the businesses in the area in addition to the residential homes. I mean, you have the Monkey Farm, you have Aspen, you have Saybrook Home, which are all great businesses in the area. And if there's dogs barking all day long, how would you like to be at Aspen? how would you like to be at Aspen, having dinner outside and hearing animals barking? So I think it's a negative for some of the businesses in the area, or even if you're working at the Ford dealer, and there's dogs barking, or you're working at the lumberyard. I don't think you would want to hear that. So we are... We're amused.
Mr. Chairman, can I respond to these, please?
All right, all right, let's try to keep some... Mr. Chairman, should we... Do you want to... The applicant would like to respond, or do you want to hear comments from the public? And then a response?
My question really is...
I don't think he can hear you, that's why.
Okay.
Bye, Bob.
Is he on mute?
Did he just get... Can you go back to the panelists, please?
I'm on the panel. He must have dropped off.
He must have dropped off.
I think we should hear from all the people attending.
I would like to hear from them.
While we're waiting, could you spell your name, sir, so I have it correct? Got it, thank you. Okay. Here's Bob. Bob, can you hear us? There he is. Bob, can you hear us?
I can't hear anything. Is anybody speaking?
Bob? Can you hear me?
Somebody want to text me again?
I got it, I got it. Robert, I can hear you. Sorry, I had technical difficulties. Somehow I got kicked out, and I'm back, sorry. So I missed the last two minutes. So I hope you wouldn't consider me disqualified for being out. If something critical occurred in the last two minutes, please bring me up to date.
So the question came up, should the members of the public...
Hello.
Can you hear me?
This is Mike Nelson. I'm just a non-guy listening. I can't hear the panelists either.
Oh, okay, so it's both of us.
I'm only speaking to you and you're speaking to me, but I can't hear anybody. I can't hear anything being said. I think they turned off their microphone by accident.
Okay, yes. Thank you. I thought it was something I did.
Yeah, I did, I did too. I was like waiting for you to turn it back on. And then it never came on. I was going to say something, I was like, well, maybe he's going to change it.
Do you hear us now?
Oh, yeah.
Hello.
Somehow we got muted.
Someone muted a couple of us.
So to continue where we were, we had several members of the public who got up to speak. Attorney Loam would like to respond, and the question is, would you like to hear all the comments from the public first and then have a response following that? And during the break, the commission, I think, was leaning towards having the public bring all their comments out at this point.
Yes.
Mr. Chairman, if I may?
No, no, hold on.
Just wait a second.
Okay, let's...
My point is, they're talking about a specific site. This regulation does not apply to a specific site.
That's correct.
So all of those comments are really, well, we'd like to hear them at the next hearing. They're just unnecessary tonight because it doesn't... We're not talking about a specific site.
We're talking about Sabre.
So all I'm asking is...
If the audience, we can just one person speak at a time. We've got people zooming in. I want to make sure that everyone hears, so...
I just want to be sure that we're talking about a regulation change and not a specific site.
Yes.
I think the commission understands it. I want the public to understand it. And I think we probably should limit the conversations to the general regulation.
Right, you are correct. The commission understands that this is an application for a regulation text change. And while a specific site may have been given as an example, it has nothing to do with what we would be voting on regarding the regulation text change. And so any comments that have to deal explicitly with a specific site are inappropriate at this time, and they're not a good use of our time together in a meeting because they should be held... If the text change is approved, comments about an application for a specific site would be welcome when and if such an application someday comes before the commission. It's important that everybody understand the process. Anything else?
We have several people with their hands raised, so... The person... I'm just trying to...
Thank you, thank you.
Come back around.
My name is Laura Tavernier. I am certainly not as long a term as...
Can you please spell that?
Oh, yes. It's T as in Tango, A V as in Victor, E R N I E R. I reside at 19 Burt Street with my spouse. So my message, our message is that zoning ordinances are incorporated to ensure public safety and welfare, correct, for the population? And that any exception to them would be an exception to the wisdom that led to the initial establishment of this zoning ordinance, correct? Is that correct? There was some master plan by the municipalities at a time to establish the current zoning ordinances. Is that... That's correct. So I would implore the commission, everybody who has a say in it, to ensure for the right reasons, public safety and the thriving of our community, to vote in a way that ensures that in the future, without regards to the specific site at this time. Although, you know, of course, we're going to talk about that at a time if this progresses there. But I would ask that you vote in a way that continues to ensure whatever wisdom was in place when these municipalities basically were governed, or these zoning ordinances were established in order to have a comprehensive plan for development of the municipalities. That's what we're asking. Is that clear? Okay, thank you. And I've only been here for two years, or this is my second year. I'm a veteran, and I've lived all around, but we love Old Sabre.
Someone else? Person in the back?
Hi, my name is Kim Fiorelli. I live at 23 River Street with my husband, my daughter, a dog, and two cats. We are 84 feet from the proposed change. So they want to go from 100 feet down to 75 feet, which would directly impact my residents as well as my neighbor. And anywhere else in town that there may be an I-zone with a residence nearby, 100 feet isn't enough feet, really, from that many barking dogs. To reduce it to 75 feet for the whole zone, anywhere that's zoned that way, to make it 75 feet from residents, is doing an injustice to all the residents that are near that zone. And I'm speaking specifically on the number of feet, so it is relevant to today's meeting. And I certainly will have more opposition if it progresses forward into the application phase as well. But like I said, 100 feet is really not enough from that kind of a facility to a residential property. And to reduce it to 75 is not the right way to go, to serve everybody.
Thank you.
Can I say something else? I'm sorry. Can I just let... We'll let everybody go and just one round? And then, so the gentleman in the back?
I'm Andrew Howat, and I live at North Cove Crossing.
Can you spell your last name?
H-O-W-A-T. And I understand how the proceedings work and why we're here. But you have to understand why we're here. And one of the reasons is that your minutes say that Attorney Leom presented the applicants would like to amend the regulations to clear the way for an animal care facility at 50 River Street. That's pretty specific as to site. So, you know, you have a lot of opposition from the public, people who are concerned that this is going to affect the value of the residencies and the enjoyment that they have. And you sent minutes that made available to the public that specifically talked about the 50 River Street project. So I think it's sort of appropriate that you hear the opposition you're going to get from the public.
Hi, my name is Sherry, S-H-R-R-Y. Last name is Hill, H-I-L. I live right across the marsh from this facility. I know, as Serge just said before me, I agree. This is specific to an address that's already on here. Otherwise, none of these people would be here, number one. Number two, the noise from two dogs or 100 dogs. There are two dogs that live across the marsh from us that are little tiny meaner dogs. When they bark, you can hear them in my house, like they're sitting in my house. The neighbors have dogs, we have dogs. It's not 125 dogs. And I don't care how many people you have out there with 125 dogs, there's still going to be noise. The lighting situation is a joke because I have fought for six months to get the lights turned off that were showing...
I'm just going to interrupt for a second. We're talking about the text change. We're not talking about the lighting complaint or any other...
No, I know.
So how the text, so just...
But to stick to this, they're going to have lights shining all over the place. If you're going to have dogs there all night long, there's coyotes in the area, there's bobcats in the area, there's deer in the area. There's a ton of wildlife, fox, you name it. So if you're going to have lights on all night long, that's going to disrupt the whole ecosystem of the marsh and the wildlife situation. The number of people driving in and out of there, day and night, is also a worry for everybody that lives there. It seems like a ridiculous use to change. Also, if it was just an industrial park and nowhere near residents, I could understand why it would happen. There is a dog daycare place in Sabre right now that's off of Route 1, behind Big Y and the dibble paving company. They are set way back, and nobody bothers them because there's no residents around there. So no matter how many dogs, how much lighting, or how many people they have working in that facility, nobody hears them. That's my biggest worry. Plus, the waste. For 125 dogs, according to several of the searches that I did online for other dog facilities, they have people that are complaining, the neighbors are complaining because of the smell. They have an industrial-type waste bucket out there that's like a dumpster, and they put chemicals in it, but you still smell the chemicals, and you still smell the dog waste. The pollution into the marsh from the land itself that would be running runoff from this place. It seems like there's all kinds of things to go against this facility sitting in our backyard.
So is there anything about the text amendment you want to discuss?
This amendment?
The text amendment. So tonight, we're not talking about the application, the text.
And I would like to know why this came out then, if we're not supposed to be discussing it.
We're talking about the text amendment. So if the text amendment goes through tonight, the next step would be the special permit application where the applicant will discuss waste, noise...
I think that's why everybody's here, because they don't want this to even go that far. That's the big reason. When everybody saw this and the whole neighborhood and all the condominium complexes in the neighborhood, that's why everybody was here tonight. Because we thought if we could come down, express our opinions now, that we wouldn't have to deal with them passing the zoning regulation and even getting that far.
Thank you. Anyone new?
Charles Farrow, F-A-R-R-O-W. I live in the Chatham units. Okay, full disclosure, I've known Terry for 45 years. I've been at his house, he's been at my house, he's liked to talk to my kids. So, sorry to be on the other side of this, but say, look at me. Okay. The 28 homes in the Chatham units, and I'm going to overlap a little because to not talk about this specific thing when the letter is so specific about where this site is going to be, we've got to talk about it. Okay, so we're directly across from the industrial site.
And pardon me, let me ask you what question? In what zone is your residence located?
I don't know, is it just residential?
Are you across River Street from 50 River Street?
Yes. I'm on Coulter Street, but there's nothing but an estuary between our house and the industrial site.
Okay, so my point is that there are residential properties, such as yours on Coulter Street, which are near industrial zones. And there are, happen to be, at present, residential uses, houses, if you will, that are across the street from 50 River Street that are residential in an industrial zone. And so this is why we must focus on the use of industrial zone, the industrial district properties for industrial uses. And the determination the commission has to make is whether or not the proposed text change for Section 49.2... 41.2.9 in the industrial zone regulations is suitable for the industrial I district. That's our focus this evening. And the industrial I district is in lots of different places around town. And it's our job to determine if this regulation would enable businesses like this to be anywhere in the industrial I-zone. And so to focus on one specific site is, at this point, we get it. There are people who live nearby, and they are not in favor of this particular use in the industrial district at that particular address. That's not relevant this evening. That's for a specific site plan, special exception application after the fact that this text change may or may not be approved. And so to the point that you and others are getting at is the industrial I district in Section 41 of our regulations has as 41.0 purpose to allow for offices, warehouses, light assembly, and other compatible light industrial uses that do not cause excess pollution or require sewers. Applicable standards permit flexible site development to retain the natural features and open qualities of the area. So with that as a purpose for the industrial district, the question is whether or not the use for an animal care service facility the use for an animal care service facility is compatible throughout all of the I districts. Okay?
But your, your minister from last week said, or the, two weeks ago, said specifically, this amendment is to lead to a facility, I think it's 40.
Sorry, can I just bring one thing up? So say this gets passed and the stoners say, you know what, we're not signing a lease, we don't want that, this location. They can go to other properties in the industrial zone. So what the zoning commission has to consider is even though they're looking at this specific site, they have to consider all the industrial sites that are located in town where this could potentially land. So it's not just one property, this is the property they're looking to lease. And it was referred to in the minutes because they were bringing it up to say this is where we're looking to go. But what Chairman Friedman is talking about is the commission is charged with, yes, it would impact this specific site, but there's other sites where other animal care services could locate in the industrial zone. So they have, the commission's looking at it from a global perspective, even though this is a proposed location.
And for a couple of you who, a few, a couple of you who have lived in Old Saybrook longer than I have, you're aware that Donnelly is an industrial site. So that's one that would also be impacted by the possibility, if approved, of an animal care services facility. There are industrial sites like Fortune Plastics, if you will, that would be another site. There are other industrial sites out on what was called Mariner's Way recently, along the, the south side of Route 1. As you get out toward Glade View, there's a couple of industrial sites. So it's not just the one behind Beard Lumber, it's those industrial properties throughout the industrial zone in other parts of town as well.
I feel like you're ignoring our complaints.
I think, I think you need to focus on the purpose of the application at this point this evening is to change the regulations to make possibility, make a possibility of applying for what you're objecting to. We have not yet gotten to that degree of specificity.
What I'm objecting to is you're trying to make the stoner's proposal universal when it has clearly been written for a specific place and you're denying that.
No, it's only universal, if, if approved, it would only be universal in the industrial I zone where it's our obligation legally to treat all properties in the I zone equally. And all of the I zone properties in town are what we are considering.
So I think, I think the concern is that we understand your concerns and we're focusing on one property, but there's other industrial areas in town where this could apply and impact different residential neighborhoods potentially or have different impacts. So the commission has to look at it globally.
So the fact that a 125 daycare kennel for dogs and 75 overnight within 200 yards of houses 16 through 28 in the Chatham units, that doesn't matter?
It does, in the case of the edge of that industrial property in that location, and you've made clear to us that that particular site being at the edge of the industrial I zone brings with it complications from neighboring residential occupants. We get that. However, that's not what we're voting on this evening. We're voting on whether or not the regulation should empower the, an application for this animal care use anywhere in the industrial zone, including the site that is foremost in your mind.
If Terry hadn't proposed this wording addition, it's not a change, it's, it's, it's being added, nobody elected, you people didn't talk about it, Terry brought that stuff to you people, would you have come up with this idea on your own?
That's, no, that's not how this happened. The applicant has an interest and had a previous discussion regarding animal care services in a different district and that, that did not pan out. The applicant, in this case, for this text change, is interested in a particular property and it would, they were being forthright in revealing that. Technically, they did not have to, but they chose to. So because the applicant has mentioned a particular site, your interest level has gone up. If they never mentioned River Street, would you be here? That's, that's how I would flip it back on you.
Sure.
Yeah.
Yes. I really can't answer that question for you, but, you know, right now on prohibited uses for industrial sites, no houses, no hospitals, no sanitariums, no retail venues, no veterinary hospitals, no bowling alleys, no funeral homes, no kennels, which your regulations define as six or more cats or dogs or combination thereof, no horse services, no farm stands, no summer day camps. So you're entertaining a lawyer-generated statement that's prohibited in your regulations. Doesn't make sense to me.
Understood.
Why did you accept the letter to change the wording of an industrial zone when it was already a prohibited use?
Right. I think you understand how the regulations work. Thanks for your input this evening.
No, I don't understand how the regulations are working. Here's, here's what I'm seeing. I'm seeing some people who saw industrial site. By the way, in other places, your language says that what these people want to do is permitted in a, in a business district and they'd be able to do that just fine, but it's not allowable in an industrial district.
The reason it's allowed in the business district is because we changed that regulation, just like we're doing tonight. We're asking this commission to change their regulation.
Where's the benefit to the public?
All right, one person at a time.
Benefit to the public, and I don't wanna get into an argument.
You are.
Okay, fine, I won't, I won't respond. Then don't, then don't, you know.
So, so to try to answer your question.
Okay.
The zoning commission writes the regulations. They look at the master plan.
But Terry wrote this one.
Talking about, which is the 10-year plan for the town. The zoning commission refers to that planning, goes to the planning commission and has their regulations. However, it is very common, but we have another application this evening, that someone comes in and says, I would like to put in, they use retail use in the industrial zone or something that's not allowed. And they can come and petition the zoning commission and that's what's happening tonight. The applicants are asking the zoning commission, would you add this to the regulations?
And, and would you permit a use that your regulations say is prohibited?
That's what they're changing. So sometimes there's uses that are not listed in the regulations that may be good uses, but as things change, I mean, kennels and daycare, I mean, 30 years ago, I don't remember a doggy daycare or a day camp. So that's what the stoners are asking, look, it's not just kenneling anymore, the use isn't allowed, would you entertain this change to your regulations? And that applies to the industrial zone. This is their specific location. However, there could be other doggy daycare, daycares or animal care service facilities in different areas in different industrial zones.
So how are you protecting the homeowners from our side of the estuary all the way to Founder's Park where there are millions of dollars of real estate and considerable tax revenue for the town? How are you protecting us?
The, the relevancy of that comes when a text change is going through. And then the stoners, if they decide that this is the property that they want to pursue, that they apply for the special exception, that is when your feedback on the specific property becomes extremely relevant. Right now, because we're dealing with just the regulation for the entire I district, it's not as relevant. There is a time where that relevancy really comes into play, but this is an end. Does that make sense?
Not really.
So, so the zoning commission could adopt this and the stoners could come in and they could deny the application.
Of course.
Because it's not a suitable location. And it's happened before where there's been text amendments approved and special permits denied, but that's based on all the information they're required to provide during the special exception permit review. Noise, traffic, all of the things we're discussing tonight, it's all the industrial.
What effect does it have on the commission to hear universal condemnation for a proposal?
If it was in a different area within an I district, would you have the same feedback?
Well.
If it wasn't relevant to your property?
Yes.
Yes, on the three that you mentioned.
Because nobody has spoken about other properties outside of the one.
On the three that you've mentioned, whether it be the old dollies or the plastic place across the railroad tracks, it would come up, I forget.
Fortune Plastics.
Fortune Plastics.
But when we applied and changed the zone in the business district, nobody showed up. No, not one person, wait a minute, not one person, we won't have time to talk, not one person showed up and objected because it didn't affect you specifically. So you didn't care, nobody cared about that. So now we're coming for industrial change. Whether we go to this spot or we don't is not relevant for tonight. Tonight, simply, can we do this in an industrial zone? And then we have to decide what we're gonna do. That's the simple question.
Can, but it's a prohibited use.
Okay, one person at a time, we're being recorded, it's a public.
Okay.
So now, are you, have you, do you have any more comments?
Yeah, yeah. I find the, the language where they take clearly a kennel and call it animal services to be disingenuous, I find the proposal by Terry, which was his to help a client, and then the commission reacting and saying that we're, we're looking at all the properties around the town to be disingenuous and I don't see the protective, protection for the homeowners, the protection for the homeowners in that area would be for you people to deny this amendment and stop this situation. I see that what, what's happening is that you're creating a business in an industrial zone that has retail, you know, so you're, you're allowing or possibly allowing a kennel because we all know it's a kennel, to be bit into an industrial zone where that use is not permitted. I, I guess I just don't feel like the zoning commission is doing its job. Sorry to say that, but.
I don't think you understand the process because the regulations are not set in stone never to be altered because different businesses come to town, different, different things happen in town that require changes to the regulations. That's what we're talking about, whether or not we would, in the industrial zone, allow this type of business in general. And that, and that seems to be a sticking point.
It is, well, your regulations say no industrial zone, no vet clinics, no kennels.
They're asking to change that. We didn't vote on that, by the way, we're just, just saying.
Did you, did you people ask for that change?
Of course not.
So the lawyer comes with a specific building, a specific plan, writes his write-up that fits that building and that, that cuts us out of the whole process. I mean, we elect you people to protect us.
So any, any resident, it doesn't have to be a lawyer, can come in and petition to change the zoning map or the text, that's your right too as resident. So it, it doesn't have to be a lawyer, it's this particular.
So I could, I could come in, I live in the Chatham units, I'm in a residential zone and I wanna run an art restoration business.
You would come and petition and ask and amend the regulation.
And is that, is running a business in a residential zone a prohibited use?
But you would change that.
You would think so, right?
No, but I'm saying that would be, that would be your request, just like the stoners have a request to add their use. Doesn't mean it'll be approved.
Feels like the stoners are asking for something that shouldn't be done.
That's why they're making a petition to change the regulations. That's how the process works. We've done.
Town with a, to run a business. So we do like new businesses. We do support expansion of the business, right? So they're trying to find a way to fit it in. I mean, you would support that.
Okay, so just, can you put on the, for a second? So we have one person and at least four other people in the audience online who want to speak.
Okay.
So I'm, I'm not trying, I'm just trying.
Do I reserve a right to come back?
Yes.
Okay. You know, I found the zoning regulations throughout, all kinds of pathways and avenues of getting around them and like this whole question of, you know, the town defines a kennel as something, Terry uses that language, the store will say it's not a kennel. You know, this doesn't make sense. So, but I'll reserve the right to come back.
Sorry, ma'am. I'd like to ask a question. What is the primary justification for zoning ordinances? You know? You just talked about business. What is the primary justification for zoning ordinances? Who knows here?
That's in a very early section of our regulations.
Somebody here should know that.
It's the overall purpose of the enabling statutes with regard to zoning as it, as being an existing regulatory agency in, in town. And I could look that up for you, but it's, it's at the very beginning of our regulations.
I'm gonna tell you what it is, I'm gonna help you. It's public health and safety. So if they are to be amended, it should be in the climate, in the, in the atmosphere of promoting public health and safety, is that not correct? Is it business or is it public health and safety? I just need to know that.
I'd have to look at the, at the words, I can't, I can't.
The primary justification.
Hang on a second.
Okay.
I can't quote you all this, all of this, the text that's in here.
Okay.
So I can't tell you that. But, but I do think that the commission's purpose is to support the goals of the town.
Primary, the primary justification for zoning ordinances is public health and safety.
It's to lessen congestion in the streets, secure safety from fire, climate flood, promote health and general welfare, to provide adequate light and air, prevent odor crowding of land, to avoid undue concentration of population, to facilitate the provision for transportation, water, sewage, school parks and other public requires.
Yes, ma'am. So how does amending this ordinance serve the public, the public you represent? How does it serve it? This is my question to you. I, I don't have a dog in the fight, I don't really care, so to speak, it's not a pun, okay? I don't really care about another business, I care about public health and safety. I'm an emergency room physician, I have seen the, the congestion in our town to the point that emergency vehicles couldn't pass me when I was on the turnpike at the very place that happens to be here, but we're not talking about it today. So I would again implore you to, but don't, please don't cross your arms because that says you're close to my suggestion. I would implore you to look at the public health and safety. Yeah, because you're not doing that. I, you think it's a joke? You think it's a joke? You think public health and safety is a joke?
No, I, I'm curious as to.
No, that's good, I, I, thank you.
Excuse me. I, I would like to understand.
That's what veterans get sometimes, sorry, I apologize. Are you?
Yes.
Okay.
So don't, we're not the only one. I'd like to speculate, my commentary has nothing to do with your veteran status. What I would like to understand is, and you had asked a question, what is the negative impact? Just in general. That's it.
I asked the question of public health and safety.
What is the negative impact? What is the negative impact on public health and safety, please?
We talked about business, we didn't talk about the public health and safety.
I'm asking you that question though.
That's your job. Here, that's your job, you're elected to that.
I'm asking the question as to what you think the negative impact on public health and safety would be for this particular business. Not particular to this particular piece of property.
You're going to talk about a hundred.
Across all industrial properties in town.
Well, anywhere. I mean, I don't know where the next proposed site may be. But you're still talking about a hundred vehicles possibly coming in. We're not even talking about staff. We're not talking about ancillary support for these animals over that period of time. I don't know that there's a place that's suitable in Old Saver. I know this one isn't, because I've been caught on that turnpike before. And you may take my passion and it may turn you off, but I am dedicated to providing health benefits to my population, which right now is my community in Old Saver. So that's why I'm passionate about this. Because I want your decision to be guided morally and ethically in why the, in what the primary justification for zoning ordinance is. And it's clear, it's public health and safety. This doesn't promote that in any sense. And, and amending it doesn't promote it in any sense. It brings business at what cost? That's what I'm asking.
Oh, uh, let me, let me assure you that the zoning commission members have been through this process a number of times before. And we take the existing regulations as our starting point when we give due consideration to reasonable viable applications to alter our regulations to allow for primarily new uses or sometimes even new zones that will then become a part of the body of regulations. Any subsequent individual application for a site plan and/or special exception, and there's a subtle difference there, that also gets the right kind of deliberation and consideration from the commission. And for this evening's purposes, you've touched on some important parts of how changing the regulations in the industrial zone are to be considered. This, the specific River Street property is not to be considered this evening. That's step two, only after step one might be approved. And we haven't gotten to that yet. Okay?
Your chairman, we have an attendee virtually who's raising his hand.
We have no.
Yep. Hi. Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Uh, my name's Mike Nelson, I'm an interested party. And, um, it just in reference to the other woman, I'm sorry, I don't know your name, but you had mentioned what are the health benefits? The health benefits to having, um, some of these, um, uh, daycare for dogs are that all the dogs need to be vaccinated, all the dogs need to be spayed and neutered. That means there's no stray dogs running around, there's no rescue dogs created. Um, there's only healthy dogs in the community. This is something that the community should have and most other communities have. And it's a benefit to the community. So there is definitely a health aspect to it. And I think we all know that, um, having a pet is actually a very healthy thing for a lot of people, especially. Um, but you know, there's rescue, there's emotional, um, helping dogs that are go on airplanes. So I think that, um, it is a necessary, not a necessary service, but it's definitely a beneficial service to most communities. And, and I'll just leave it there.
Mr. Nelson, a Saber resident? And where, what's his address?
Uh, that's private, I don't think I need to share that.
You all have. Are you a Saber president?
Uh, yeah, is, maybe.
So Simon, has his hand raised as well?
Yeah, sorry, uh, yeah, thank you, I spoke earlier. One, thank you for the, for the very healthy debate. But two, I'm, I understand that what you're asking for tonight as opposed to the specific location. But what I don't quite understand is why, once this specific location is decided, why you won't approach people in the, in the local area to, to, for comment and feedback. That's, that's my concern. I understand what you're asking for. I understand it's not specific, but my concern is the next step and how people will find out about it.
So, um, I think to answer your question about how all of us, except a few, why we're here and why they receive so many letters. Um, I and my husband. But we're on, we were, if you go to the town of Old Saver, you can get minutes and agendas for anything and everything this town does. I happen to read them, so does my husband. And we saw it and took me by surprise. And I did go to town and I asked to see about like where it was. I, I tried to do my diligence, I'm not a lawyer by any stretch of the imagination. And I asked, so I think what, okay, if you change industrial zone one, it is every industrial zone one area. I think the reason why people are concentrating on this is because, as we said prior, it's in your minutes and you passed your minutes. So they hold a little bit of weight. If you didn't pass them and said, uh, we'd like to take out, uh, this fifty River Street, like, and put in any industrial zone one, that might have changed a little bit, but everybody here, because my husband, I found, we read. And the next day I was out, I visited River Street, I went to the businesses, I went down River Road, Jakesport, Whisper Court. I talked, I stocked my car with people in their yard and I asked them, did you guys know this was going on and this is a consideration? And I didn't say to put the dog park in at the Camp Bow Wow. I said to change the industrial zone one. So the stoners may decide, I, I don't know, but I think you said that there was another industrial park that you tried. I don't know if your corporate headquarters has to have final approval of where you go. But I told people that it's not, it, it's not to approve it. But we're trying to nip it in the bud. Because eventually I was like, oh, like really? Like if it just passed now, we have to go through all this all over.
And higher alert.
And higher alert. Okay, so, but the other thing is, I think if, and I didn't, I, I honestly didn't have time, because my mother is extremely sick, for me to go to all the other industrial zone one parks and say, like, look around and see the neighbors and say, hey, this could affect you. It, it may not, it may affect us, but it may affect you. I am telling you, I, there wasn't one person I gave this, we made a ton of copies of the minutes, that did, that said, what are you talking about? Where did you get this information? So hopefully we are promoting Old Saver and saying, you gotta be, you've got to look in and see what's going on in your town. And I'm so proud that so many people brought their paper with my highlighting on it just to show that maybe the stoners don't do it. But in eight months, you know, camp, you know, public is going to come in and want to do, uh, like a little camp there, so.
And it's a different commission.
Yeah.
You may not even be here.
It, it's just one of those things, I.
But you've changed the regulations.
And I think, and I really do think because the address was put in, it, it has heightened it tremendously. And that's why you don't see anybody that lives near any other industrial one areas here tonight. But I think if it changes and we take these minutes and go all over to all the industrial zones and say, it, it may affect you, then you probably are. But that's how and why so many people are here and very passionate. And, um, and it's just, it, it's just the way the minutes were written and I did minutes before, so I understand like some of these. I did some of these things before and it's, let me tell you.
You, you understand that I had no control.
Why?
And I can't even, I can't even amend it.
No, no, you can't. But then, I mean, so that's why there's so much like.
I, I, I know why you're here, I get it.
Yeah, and so, yeah. Thank you. Yeah, I get.
One more person?
I, I just have a question since this is supposed to be for all industrial areas in Old Saver. And we were talking about health and safety of people. You know, we were problem in this town already with sewers. What, and you're going to stick a hundred and twenty-five dogs in one spot and say, what's going to happen with all of that pollution? Seriously, I, I, if you have a hundred and twenty-five dogs in one yard, how many times do you think they're going to go to the bathroom every day? And how, and they're talking about land pollution, water pollution in this town. We've been fighting a battle against sewers for god knows how long. People have already had to redo their septic systems to bring them up to date with beach communities and everything else. This is, you know, I don't know of any industrial area around here that isn't close to either a marsh or some type of water facility. Something that's going to be part of DEP. And that, that situation, is that being considered in this?
That would be considered in a specific application and proposal.
But not the general one, because it's just for any industrial area?
Well, somebody could come in with twenty dogs on a site. Or six dogs as a animals care service. So it, it's going to depend on each application. This specific application has a lot of. So that's, that's what the zoning commission will look at if the next step, which is the special permit. And it'll get referred for health.
But that'll be.
Planning commission and it'll go through a whole other review.
Through everything.
Traffic, noise, we'll need to demonstrate all of that. Lights.
That would be specific to the particular site.
But that, but when you're just changing the regulation, you don't care.
It's.
If the regulation covers every industrial site, you don't care.
Is specific to the site.
So it does.
Because each site has different characteristics.
True.
So, so I think the difference is, I think the commission cares. The difference is there could be six dogs or ten dogs, nine, a hundred dogs. So that's where each application is going to be different.
Right.
So what in the.
If it passes. So is that if it, if it passes?
If it.
So it could be six, if.
I'm just saying.
So if it passes, so, right.
Right. I need to go up front. Just if you can speak loud, just so we can catch it on the audio. So there's been a lot of talk clearly about the specific site. I just want to reiterate that it's important, you're talking about all of the I-zone. Need to look at how much residential dwellings there are that above these I-zone. So I happen to be a dwelling that abuts the I-zone. And reducing that number of feet, now these guys here, I get it, they're, they're going to have a noise, but they're nowhere near as close as the residents on River Street are. And reducing the number of feet is not in the interest of any residents in the industrial, that abuts an industrial zone for that kind of facility. So if there's any residents that are in those, that I-zone, it's not going to benefit.
And I, I think solidarity with you people. I drove around to see what it was. You're just ridiculously close. It couldn't be closer.
I'm the closest.
You're the closest. And, and, and you know, where did the seventy-five feet number come from?
Because I'm eighty-four.
Right.
The rule is a hundred and they want to reduce it to seventy-five to get that one.
The way, the way the amendment is written is to specifically help the stoners get to their special exception. Agreed, they've got to get through that too. But, you know, there's, there's something that doesn't seem fair about this situation. Um, also, the veteran who talked about the health and safety, Mr. has already said, there are concerns that we will deal with with the special exception. Parking, traffic mitigating for usage. I'm stealing these, by the way, from the Camp Bow Wow form that was the part of the, uh, sound study. Which was done sixteen years ago. And if you look at it, the decibel levels were pretty close to acceptable. Um, odor control, lighting, indoor noise, and a host of other topics. All of which should make you worry about what are the health and safety concerns contained in this application? That's enough for that. Thank you for your time. Yes. Oh, sorry.
All right. Step up again. And I'm going to turn around. Audience. That's good. Janet and I do not want to make that. We want to make friends. We do, we hear you. We hear you. We do. Hear you. For us to run this business, it's a lovely business, guys don't see that yet. Because it's still in infancy in this community. We have to find somewhere and we have searched high and low, trust me, we've searched high and low. This is a place where Steve Bogin, who owns that facility, likes the usage. We have a couple of other places where there are no residents, but in an industrial zone that don't like the usage. We can't get a landlord to give us permission if we don't have somebody who wants to work with us, which Steve does. Now, you know, Janet and I are going to have to decide, we don't want to battle the town. We, we really don't. But I think that the zoning commission has done their level best to educate you to what we've been educated in the last eight months. Which is, you can't do anything when it comes to animal care. Whether you guys like this idea or not, you can't do it. You're just, you're saying no. You're saying no everywhere. And I think that that's so patently unfair to business owners, we're going to create jobs. And what we, we're going to help people. Most families have got two people working. There was a thirty-five percent increase in dog ownership during COVID. COVID saved a lot of people. I, I can't work with my dog, he wants to be on my lap all day or he wants to be running all day. Our law solves that. We haven't gotten to the point where we're even trying to give you guys a really, we've done it with the zoning commission about eight months ago with a different location, but you guys haven't even seen what this is. You're all casting judgment because you think we're never going to have a hundred and twenty-five dogs at one point. It is an upper level. We're not going to have seventy-five orders. And it's the number one in the country because it knows how to deal with health and safety. And we've been customers for eleven years. We've known Meredith for about eight years. She's very close to us, she made a move from Boulder to help us run this camp and she's also an owner. So I understand Janet and I and Meredith, we all hear you. We do. I don't want to give up on some Old Saver, I think there are going to be a lot of people who love this concept. At the same time, we are not interested in making entities with all of the power. And I think that's very important for the commission to know, we've been following all of your, the process to a T. We hired Terry because he is local and he knows this community, knows Essex. And we've been doing our level best to be very open and transparent and be positioned as kind of really bad guys. And we don't think that's fair at all. We really don't. I'll leave it at, we hear you. We're going to have to make a decision at this point. We would like to be able to consider other locations. And if this is all about Fifty River Street and it's all about everybody piling on on how much you hate it for all kinds of different reasons, it's dead in Old Saver. Thank you.
All right. I want to make, I'm going to make one comment. My name's Steve Bogin, I'm the owner of the property. And I only have one question to ask all of you. When did daycare get put into the industrial park zone? A one, I want. At one point it was amended, probably before all of us were even in here. But the fact that it was brought in, because daycare hasn't been here for fifty years. So the point is, somebody's got to watch dogs, somebody's got to watch kids. We've got daycare on one A, right, A one over in Mill Rock right now. There's fifty, sixty, seventy kids there fenced in like dogs, making a lot of noise. They're going through all the things the state requires, they got to have their shots or whatever else. So what's the difference? What's the difference between a dog or a human being? Say what you want.
Mr. Chairman?
It's, uh, it's time, it's time to consider wrapping things.
It's a, it's time, it's time to consider wrapping things up, so I will make a motion to, oh, let, before, before we close the public hearing, let me check with the zoning enforcement officer and our clerk with regard to our referrals. I read online, the Harvard Management Commission basically had no comment. And the Department of Environmental and Energy Protection, the DEEP, said it was generally compatible. Did we have any other referrals such as the planning commission?
The planning commission stated the referral was consistent with the plan of development. And that's all the referral responses I expect at this point. We sent referrals out on April eighteenth.
Okay, so with um with regard to our our diligence at gathering information during the open portion of the public hearing then, we've covered uh the referrals and input from the public and from the applicant and.
Give a summary at the end. I'm turning for the applicant.
Pardon? I'm sorry.
Mister Chairman, if I could just have one final word, I'd appreciate it. I'm the.
Okay.
Yeah. Thank you. So um the, as Chris just indicated, the planning commission voted to approve this unanimously. Um, at the last hearing, Dr. Olson, who's been in Sabre forever, also indicated that the noise level of dogs is not, parking dogs is not nearly what people think it is, it's much quieter. And the other kinds of uses in this industrial zone um that are allowed are um freight and trucking terminals, bus terminals, railroad right-of-way and passenger stations, helipads. So by comparison, this kind of use would certainly be less obstructive than than those kinds of uses. And so we believe that this regulation, which was written with the informal input of this commission, is consistent with those kinds of uses which would be allowed, one would expect in an industrial zone as opposed to, say, in a residential zone. So I think the commission has heard a lot of information, a lot of information tonight. Uh, I think they understand um what their job is and we appreciate the time and effort that this commission has has put into this. So thank you.
Right. So at this point, I will make a motion to close the public hearing. And after that, the commission cannot accept any additional input from anyone except staff under special circumstances. So this, this is the curtailment of the discussion part. And the can, the commission will then deliberate on the matter. Five commissioners present this evening will vote. The alternate, this is your last chance for, that would be Justin, um, the last chance to have input. Because once the public hearing is closed, only the five voting commissioners participate. Uh, so uh, to be, to be kind to Justin, who's an alternate, uh, Justin, do you have?
I have no further commentary.
Alright.
Sandy is an alternate.
Yeah.
Sandy is also.
Oh, yeah, Sandy De Senzo, I'm sorry. I've, I neglected to also mention Sandy De Senzo as an alternate. Sandy, Sandy, then um, this is it. This is your, your chance for input. Not, no? Okay.
And I'll second your motion to close the public hearing.
Alright, I made a motion, I make a motion to close the public hearing and Jerry Lewis seconds the motion to close the public hearing. All those, any discussion, all those in favor of closing the public hearing on this matter signify by saying aye. Aye, aye, alright. Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion passes, five in favor, no abstentions and none opposed. Do we, does the commission wish to deliberate on this matter this evening? And I, I would say that we don't need any additional information and that um it would be appropriate for us to deliberate and vote on this. Is that okay?
I have a comment, Tom. Last, at the last meeting, um, we asked for noise uh studies. I don't think we have anywhere near adequate information on that.
Can I, can I respond? So the, the applicants provided information. Yeah. Um, about noise with different sites. I understand it's not that specific site. But since it's not the full application and it's a text amendment, they didn't wanna go through an expense of having a whole noise study done for one specific site when it's a text amendment that impacts all industrial properties.
Right.
I think, and I just think that the noise question is big enough that we should understand it.
Well, that's.
For any site.
Well, that's for you to, that's for you to consider as part of your deliberative process to arrive at your vote when we get there. I wanna make clear, I wanna make clear that the language that we are considering this evening uh for the I-one zone, section forty-one point two point nine. The applicant has concurred with the zoning regulation that all six uses of the word shall will be, will be changed through the word will. And that in the very last line of the proposed text change, the number of animals will not exceed one hundred and twenty-five max, maximum on site. Seventy-five for boarding. So that seventy, and then let me, let me add a sentence to make this clearer. The seventy-five for boarding are for overnight boarding. If present during daytime, the seven, any part of the seventy-five for boarding count toward the one twenty-five maximum.
So the proposal is to amend the text to say the number of animals will not exceed, would it make sense to say one hundred and twenty-five total. Which includes a maximum of seventy-five for overnight boarding.
Okay, that works. Alright, so that, that's what's, that's what's going to be voted on. If anyone else has any additions or corrections to make with regard to the deliberations we heard from concerned citizens and the pertinent part of their presentations to the zoning commission this evening, in my opinion, include comments on the industrial I-zone with regard to its purpose and for uh li- listing uh the uses that are broken down into permitted as of right, permitted as special exception, and prohibited uses. The applicant and the public have reviewed all of those. So it's up to the commission to determine if the zoning text regulation change is acceptable to the commission to become part of the regulations in this, in the I-industrial zone as section forty-one point two point nine. Alright, so the way forward at this point would be for me to make a motion to approve the petition to amend the old Sabre zoning regulations for animal care services as a special exception use in the industrial zone, including uh do we have, was, was there a change in the definition for this application? Yes.
Yes.
Yes, including, and that definition change had to do with I'm sorry, we didn't. Alright, so the, the definition change is, is, is a minor change. But the definition change is what, Chris?
So animal care service.
Right.
Um, hold on, I'm just.
I have animal care ser, I don't have any underlining as should, there should be for for the animal care services definition. Any new words?
Care service is the dog, the keeping of dogs and cats for grooming, training, daycare and boarding. That's the same as it exists. It also said veterinary, and this added veterinary services. The existing regulation says an animal care service business is not considered a kennel and may be permitted as a special exception permit. That text was removed. And it says a retail pet store, animal care service business or animal shelter is not considered a kennel and may be permitted as a special exception on a lot of less than five acres. And the purpose of that change was to do some housekeeping to our existing regulations that currently conflict.
Right, okay. So that's, that's also a part of what we are voting on as well. So we have the definition section in section nine, animal care services, and a new section forty-one point two point nine, animal care services as special exception use and fifty-three special standards. Uh, so I make a motion to approve the zoning regulation text changes.
As amended.
Is there a second? If there is no second, then the motion fails and the application for a text change is not approved. Alright, next item on the agenda. A petition to amend the old Sabre zoning regulations to amend section fifty-three special standards for drive-through windows, paragraph H, to include properties with frontage on Route one sixty-six. Applicant SPR Oasis LLC, Agent Attorney Edward Casella. Mister Casella.
You just give everyone a minute to clear the room, so.
Okay.
Attorney, Chris, I'm gonna make his way up here for the crowd.
Thank you. Okay.
One second. So Mister Chairman, can I just ask one question of one of our participants? Attorney Shansky's here and I'm not sure if she's waiting to speak on her three handford items or just is observing, so I just wanted to check. That she's there. Can you unmute her, please?
Good evening, I'm just observing, thank you.
Okay, I just wanted to check, I didn't want you to have a late night if you didn't have to.
Thank you.
Okay, uh, good evening, Attorney Ed Casella here, representing SPR Oasis. Uh, Bob Landino and his daughter Anna are here as well. SPR is the contract purchaser of fifty-two Spencer Plain Road, um, which is a locally owned, SPR is a locally owned development team of Bob Landino and Andrew Chester. Um, we're here to discuss a text amendment to the drive-through, uh, not here to discuss it, we're here to ask the commission to approve a text amendment to allow for uh drive-through restaurants for properties with frontage on Spencer Plains Road. You may recall, we were before the commission, um, earlier this year, discussed conceptually the proposed development of fifty-two Spencer Plain. If I can share my screen, I can just run through some of the materials that we've submitted as part of this uh application. Um, what we're seeking to amend is paragraph H of um uh, the drive-through regulation section, which currently says that no property can have a drive-through unless property has a minimum of three hundred and fifty feet of frontage on Route one period by adding in and or Route one sixty-six, which would allow for uh drive-throughs of, on properties at Spencer Plain Road that have more than three hundred and fifty feet of frontage. Um, although we're here to discuss a specific, uh, you know, a general text amendment, we know that this text amendment could encompass any property on Spencer Plains Road, so we wanna be cognizant of that after the last public hearing. Uh, the property that we're, Mister Landino's under contract to purchase is fifty-two Spencer Plains Road, which is wedged between uh the highway to the north, Route ninety-five, the railroad tracks uh to the south, located on the um eastern side of Spencer Plains Road, immediately across the railroad tracks from uh the Max's Place, uh Big Y Development. Uh, just general, general con- concept plan at currently is um, there's a grocery store proposed in the rear of the property with uh two uh drive-through, potential drive-through restaurants proposed in the front. Uh, there are no tenants designated yet, uh, but having a drive-through as an option uh is something I think the developers believe is advantageous to the site development uh as it's, as it's continuing forward. Conceptual site plan, um, this, after we went through uh informally with the zoning commission, Mister Joe Wren was hired from Indigo Land Design and we are currently um at the Wetlands Commission for the public hearing uh for uh development of this parcel, so you can see again. Rear of the site is back here where there's a proposed grocery store. Spencer Plains Road is on the left side, an entry drive, and then the two restaurants to the north and south of uh the entry drive with the potential to be a drive-through restaurant. Um, we took this amendment to the planning commission uh later this month and they did determine that it was consistent with the plan of conservation and development. As, as in terms of the application of uh this amendment to other parcels, uh, there's a few properties that are located on Spencer Plains Road that have greater than three hundred and fifty feet of frontage. Uh, we provided a bit of a sketch showing what those properties are, but uh, two custom drive, which is located at the corner of Spencer Plain and uh custom drive has about three hundred and eighty-five feet is where Hell of Color is now. Ninety-two Spencer Plains Road, which is immediately to the north of this property. Uh, I, I shouldn't say immediately to the north, on the other side of the highway interchange um, has over three hundred and fifty feet. And then the two properties, um, Max's Place, the Lyman Properties all told um have more than three hundred and fifty feet of uh frontage on Route one. Uh, but as standalone, they have three hundred and fifty feet of frontage on uh Spencer Plains and then sixteen sixty-seven Boston Post Road, which is West Marine, has four hundred and thirty feet of uh frontage on Spencer Plain, but that also has more than three hundred and fifty feet of frontage on uh Route one. So that is uh the basis for our request. Uh, I think what happened was the commission amended the uh text. Um, I, I believe it was in May when it consolidated and reconfigured some of the drive-through regulations and that the provision about three hundred and fifty feet of frontage on, on Route one was added. So we're asking for it to be allowed back in for if you have three hundred and fifty feet of frontage on, on Spencer Plains. If um you don't think having the properties particularly north of uh the highway is appropriate, you know, we'd be willing to talk about uh further restrictions that you have to have three hundred and fifty feet of frontage on Spencer Plain and be located south of Route ninety-five as an example. Uh, but from a, from a development perspective, talk about the plan of conservation and development. Um, you know, this is an economic corridor in a town. Mister Landino can discuss some of the, you know, potential development. Mr. Lindino can discuss some of the, you know, potential development options, but the restaurant retailers, they're all going since COVID to smaller dining rooms with drive-throughs. It's just the nature of the way that restaurant developers in particular are heading these days. So we hope that the commission agrees with us that this, you know, having a large frontage on Spencer Plains as it came to having large frontage on Route one won't open up a lot of properties toward to drive-throughs, but will open up certain properties that are amenable for this type of development. Do you have anything to add?
Yeah, Bob, like, you know, only that since COVID, certainly the characteristics of casual restaurants, for casual restaurants have changed dramatically. The increase in drive-throughs have, you certainly see the impact of that at places like Dunkin' Donuts on Route one, which you approved relatively recently, you know, COVID saw, you know, an increase in the queue lengths on drive-throughs. We see this as a kind of an ideal opportunity for our drive-through because the queuing businesses all happen internally within the site. So, you know, compared to most of the sites on Route one where you have limited opportunities for queue lengths, you know, this site has internal queuing and, you know, you would never have an impact on a state road or on the public street system. And because of its regional access with the highway, it, you know, it certainly lends itself to not only local patronage, which it certainly would get, but also to regional patronage, and the, and the drive-throughs are key to that, that aspect of the activity. So, so we think it's appropriate, especially given the changes that have occurred in the business over the last two or three years, and our site, and the sites along the border are mostly ideally suited for that, for that change.
Thank you.
All right. Anything else from the applicant?
No, it's this time.
Okay, and checking with our clerk and zoning enforcement officer, we have received referral notices from the DEEP, where they, on July fifth, remarked that it's, the proposal is generally consistent. We have the Town of Old Saybrook Borough Management Letter of June twenty-second, where they have no comments. We have the Lower Connecticut River Valley Council of Governments Letter dated June second, and they conclude that there will be no significant intermunicipal impacts to the neighboring River Cog towns of Westbrook, or adverse impacts to the ecology of Long Island Sound if the proposed language is adopted as proposed. And the Town of Old Saybrook Planning Commission Letter of April thirteenth says they recommend approval of the above referenced text amendment regarding section fifty-three, special standards, drive-through windows, paragraph H. All right, anything else, Chris or Joanne?
So we, I think we've received all the referral responses that we're going to receive at this point. The letters were sent on June first, so we've got quite some time to respond.
All right, so this, the section fifty-three, section H that is proposed is regarding drive-through windows, and it would apply to properties on Route one, and it says in the proposal and/or Route one sixty-six. Why is it necessary to say and/or when or would cover both Route one and Route one sixty-six? Mr. Casella, why is it, why is it advisable to include the word and in the and/or? Give me a moment. Is that an additive and, that if you had three hundred feet on one of those two roads and fifty-one feet on the other, that would make it qualify? That's not good zoning. If you got three fifty, you gotta have all three fifty on one road or the other road.
Yeah, that, we don't have any issue with changing it to just, just or.
Just or, okay, thank you. Anyone else have any questions? This is with regard to Spencer Plains Road in particular being mentioned. Yeah, that's a lot of B four gateway business, B four district properties in section thirty-four. And thirty-four point zero purpose of that section is to allow for development of regional businesses that require easy access to major highways. Applicable standards require building and size layout appropriate to the gateway to the Town of Old Saybrook. These regulations may pay particular attention to ensure that traffic congestion caused by these developments will not degrade or impede access to the town itself. All right, so, anyone present in the room or online who wishes to speak in favor of or in opposition to this application, now is your time during this public hearing. Anyone, anyone there?
There's no one willing.
No one's speaking. And are there any commissioners who have comments, questions, or particularly alternates? That would be Sandy and Justin. Any comments or questions during, during this open part of the public hearing? None appearing. Any other commissioners seated this evening have any questions?
No.
None appearing, then I'll make a motion to close the public hearing on.
Where's that at, Bob?
What's that? We got one?
So, before we close the public hearing, I just want to clarify with Attorney Casella.
Okay.
We discussed changing item H to three hundred and fifty feet of frontage on Route one or Route one sixty-six.
Right.
And you had no objection to adding, it's located south of I ninety-five? Was that what your text was before? I just don't want to get into a discussion and tell, let's throw that in, and you're not happy with that.
Correct. Two of the properties that we identified that are north of ninety-five have frontage on Spencer Plains Road, Route one sixty-six. The commission may decide that they don't want drive-throughs in that location heading to the north, only toward the central Route one corridor. So if the commission decided we only want the availability of drive-through restaurants on Route one sixty-six, if the property is located to the south of Route, you know, the Connecticut Turnpike, then we would be okay with adding that type of language.
I, I think that's a good idea, and maybe a little out of the scope of this, but the traffic that's going to get generated by this and other developments in the area, I'd like to see how that all panned out without exposing more properties to the north of the highway at the same time. At some point in the future, that could be added or changed or altered, that's kind of what I was thinking.
It looks like that's on residential, natural way.
Residential, the ninety-five.
Right.
Right.
The other property. Yeah, there's, you can see here, this is my, you know, archaic sketch, but, well, let me share my screen for that. Here's Route one on the south, the West Marine has three hundred and fifty feet of frontage, Max's Place has three hundred and fifty feet of frontage. Here's our parcel with three hundred and fifty feet of frontage, Connecticut Turnpike. When you go to the north, now this parcel has three hundred and fifty feet of frontage, but it backs up to residential properties, Buck Hill, Land Road, and then another property where Harold Propeller is, has three hundred and fifty feet of frontage. So I thought that the commission may ask the question about, should we limit this to these three properties basically, right? Or this area on Spencer Plains where drive-throughs could be allowed? So that's why I wanted to suggest that we would be amenable to having a condition that it only, the properties on Spencer Plains have to be south of.
All right, anything else before we close the public hearing? Nothing, nothing appearing, then I'll make a motion to close the public hearing regarding the text amendment proposal to the Old Saybrook zoning regulations to amend section fifty-three special standards for drive-through windows in paragraph H to include properties with frontage on Route one sixty-six, with a minor, minor change this evening to eliminate the word and from the and/or in the proposed text. Is, I'm sorry, is there a second?
Let's be clear.
All right, Jerry, Jerry Lewis seconds the motion to approve the.
No, no, hold on, hold on.
I think he's closing the public hearing.
Yeah, this is to close the public hearing.
Yeah.
That's all. First, you have to close the public hearing, then you deliberate, so this is to.
I think it threw us off because you started into the amendment as the.
I'm sorry. I'm sorry, this is, this, I make, all right, I withdraw that motion. I will admit, since it didn't get seconded, that motion would fail, so I make a, I make a motion to close the public hearing on the petition to amend the Old Saybrook zoning regulations to amend section fifty-three, special standards, drive-through windows, paragraph H, with a minor change of eliminating the word and, and its accompanying slash from the proposed text.
Now? Second?
Is, is there a second to close the public hearing?
Second.
Jerry Lewis seconds the motion. All right. As part of our deliberations, which we assume, we can proceed, is there?
We have to vote.
We, yes, all right, right, sec, all right. All in favor of closing the public hearing signify by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed, any abstentions? Public hearing is therefore closed. For deliberations on this matter, we've done our due diligence, we've looked at the information received from our referrals, and we've listened to the applicant and looked at the maps for the properties that would be impacted. We've clarified the wording of what is proposed. Is there anything else to consider in our deliberations? No, I read the purpose section of the B four district in which these properties are all located, the ones that would be impacted by the text change, and I guess it's time to make a motion, and I will, I will do that now with regard to the proposed text change. I make a motion to approve the petition to amend the Old Saybrook zoning regulations, amending section fifty-three, special standards for drive-through windows, paragraph H, to include properties with frontage on Route one sixty-six, having more, three hundred and fifty feet or more. Is there a second, is there, Jerry Lewis seconds the motion?
South of I ninety-five. South, oh, south of I ninety-five.
Pardon me?
So, the text would read three hundred and fifteen feet of frontage on Route one or Route one sixty-six when located south of I ninety-five.
Okay, yes.
Did you mean that? Good, second.
Thank you. Jerry Lewis seconds the motion, right?
Aye. Okay, Bob.
Who seconded it, John?
I did.
Jerry, I got, I got Jerry.
Yeah, I did have.
I'm sorry.
Better come to the next meeting.
I'm sorry. Any discussion on the motion? All those in favor of the motion to approve the text amendment as previously described, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Who we got, I got Jerry?
Unanimous, unanimous.
All right, any opposed? One, me. Any abstentions? None. All right, motion carries. Four in favor, one opposed, no abstentions.
Effective date, August fifteenth?
Effect, effective date?
August fifteenth.
August fifteenth, sounds good.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hopefully we see you soon.
Next on the agenda, we have the things regarding Hanford Commons that, as I understand it, were requested to be postponed, is that correct?
So, Hanford Commons has requested that their three applications, which are listed B, C, and D on your agenda, are continued, so we haven't opened the public hearing, not to open the public hearing and continue those to August fifteenth, and they granted us an extension to do so.
All right, so I'll make a motion to continue the Hanford Commons applications regarding the public hearings in our agenda, items B, C, and D, to our next, to our August fifteenth meeting. At seven PM, at three oh two Main Street, Town Hall, second floor conference room, all right, first floor conference. All right, is there a second to the motion to continue the Hanford Commons three agenda items to August fifteenth?
Second.
Seconded, all right. All in favor of the motion to continue Hanford Commons three applications to August fifteenth, signify by saying aye. Aye. All right, any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries. Next up, staff report.
Will you make sure we get updated materials for the.
Updated.
Materials?
We don't have updated materials.
Okay, so we didn't have anything, this goes way back to, along, two months ago, the original application.
The application was received, and what I've been doing is.
Just posting it?
So we've been posting the application that's received, and I'm trying to do this a little bit more with all applications.
So you're not going to get copies?
Well, let me finish. So I've been sending out the referrals before and not giving you the copy of the original submittal because then there's two and three extra copies, so applicants are spending thousands of dollars in copying, and then you get four copies of a site plan. So they submit electronically in a hard copy, and then I do the referrals, and then you'll get hopefully the final version with Jeff's comments addressed and everyone else, and not three or four versions of the site plan. Good, is that?
Haven't got anything for the last two. At least they weren't in the packs for the last two.
Because they haven't been prepared to go forward.
So if they open the meeting.
I mean, it was, it was my idea to do it a little bit differently, and I'm doing it with other applicants as well. So the application comes in, now we're doing electronic and paper. So they come in and bring me thirty copies of these, because remember, it's going to you, it's going to the planning commission, it's going to the Architectural Review Board, and it's going to all their other referral folks. So there's times that these big packets initially come in with forty copies. So then the reviews start, Architectural Review makes comments, Planning makes comments, our engineer makes comments, and then by the time this all gets to you, you have five different copies of the plan, so I've just been taking the one original in and trying to cut down on your paperwork, but if you'd like all the rendition, I'm just posting online.
No, just the final one.
Just a lot from the.
Just the last one, the official one that becomes.
So they, they're working on addressing something right now, so that's why
You didn't give us anything for this meeting.
Because I don't have any revision, we knew they were
We knew. Oh, you knew they were, okay, I didn't know. We got an email.
You mean, that's all she had to say?
We did get an email.
I mean, in general, it's
At the last minute, yeah. In the meantime, I was looking for it.
But I didn't have, but I didn't have anything to give to you either. So that's kind of So that's what I've been trying to do, just to cut down on your paperwork, their costs, you know, all across the board.
I can understand. Seems everything comes at the last minute.
So that's the other thing, is I've been pushing off applications, so for example, one of the ones to 19 in April, and I just get the public hearing. So I think that this, I guess we're into staff report now. There's this rush to get the application in. Then we find efficiencies, this is in general, with the applications. And the applicant rushes to respond, and they can't respond to our comments in time, and then you have another application and another version of the plan. So what I've been trying to do is have all that go on behind the scenes with the hope we have 65 days to schedule a public hearing, that in that 65 days that you'll have, we could have addressed all of the comments. And the application will come to you with one hard copy saying, Jeff made the following comments, these have all been addressed. Here's architectural review board, these have all been addressed, rather than this huge paper trail and then posting the versions online.
Let's hope we do that, let's hope that happens that way.
We're, I'm trying. I think it's working because like I remember coming to meetings where there'd be like, somebody has one with one date, somebody has another date, it's like, what's the date is?
Yeah.
Yeah, it just, this is better. If it works.
Don't break it.
Speaking of, so Bob, we're into staff report, I guess, I just kind of jumped to it. Can you hear me, Bob? Bob, hello? Bob's muted.
Bob, unmute yourself.
Bob, unmute. Hello? Unmute, Bob!
Mute, unmute. All right, I did it. So what's, what, I'm losing steam here, I'm, I'm, I'm sick. I can't, so what's the question?
So staff report, I'll try to make it quick. Attorney Royston contacted me this afternoon and several, I think it was in the beginning of the year, Saber Point Marina came in for a minor modification to their special exception use, and the proposal at that time was adopted by, here is the November 2nd modification included the elimination of two ground floor bedrooms, which space was used to increase the size of the lobby lounge. It converted a second floor meeting area to a one-bedroom suite and left a single bedroom in the first floor lobby area, which Saber Point proposes to eliminate and convert to service area. Saber Point proposes to convert the second floor one-bedroom suite into two separate bedrooms, so there's no change in the parking requirements. They propose to increase the floor area of the two second floor bedrooms by an eight-foot extension. The existing wall is 62 feet in length. I'm just kind of scanning through this quickly. The 2.75 feet for an overhang, which extends across the front and wraps around a corner for a total of 77 linear feet. The increased bedroom sizes will accomplish the eight-foot extension along 56 feet of the second floor wall over the ground below, there will be an uncovered balcony on the corner. The net increase in building structure will be 242 per the table on the plan that I just distributed earlier, which is within the limit of the multiple minor modifications. So it appears that what they're doing is flipping some of the rooms. They're removing the one awkward room that's on the first floor by the lobby potentially for service area. And they have, with the combination of the modifications, they had had 288 square feet left, remember, we made a cap? And what they're asking is since they feel it's consistent with the previous special exception modification, if the commission would allow me to handle this.
Chris, I replied by email, and my concerns have to do with coverage, because the building got wider from the drip line and setbacks and projections into setbacks. And then there's parking, even though, oh, the parking is not clear to me from their additional services or whatever they've converted some rooms into. I don't know what use that is and what parking requirement that might need. And then with regard to parking, locals are familiar with the fact that Saber Point Inn Marina Spa does not have sufficient parking on site for all of their combined uses. And that the town parking at the Pavilion Mini Golf Parking Lot is often used by guests at the Saber Point Inn Marina facility, and their staff regularly parks at the Pavilion Parking Lot. And so with regard to parking, anything that has a chance of increasing a requirement of parking is counter to public health and safety down there because it's, it's full.
So their argument is that because they're keeping the same number of rooms and flip-flopping them, that it's not going to triple parking issue.
This is 250 spaces and they only need 246. They're approved for 246.
Right. Because it was based on the overlapping uses. So what their argument is, is they're just kind of moving bedrooms around.
Yeah, moving around, but not
The balcony is, or a deck is not getting, keep the parking demand, that's
Not changing.
Not changing. So would you like them to come in for a modification of the special exception?
Not me. No.
Bob?
Bring them in.
In?
Well, nobody else wants to bring them in. Okay. I think so.
Can you hear us?
What's that? You want?
We, we thought that Chris could handle it administratively.
Okay, well, if the majority of the commission feels that's okay, then do that, but I would say, okay, go for it.
Okay, thank you, yeah.
All right, and I'll just yeah, staff report, I'll just cut it short on that. Call it a night, we'll stay out for another half an hour. You have questions? Thank you, Chris. Very welcome.
All right.
He has to adjourn the meeting.
Second, all in favor? Motion carries.